We'll call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we'll call, I'll entertain a motion to excuse Marty Chambers for tonight.
So move.
I'll support.
All those in favor, signify by their standing aye.
Aye.
opposed. And with that, let's do call roll.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers? Is absent, sorry. Councilmember Phillips?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here.
Now, let's promote motion to approve the consent agenda tonight. Uh, has our committee, the whole minutes in it as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers is absent.
Alright, now we'll run the citizen comment for items not on the agenda. Anybody? Nobody tonight? Old business is empty, moves us to number five, new business, item A, interim building inspections. Michael?
Evening, Mayor, City Council. At the May 21st, 2018, City Council made my recommendation to approve Cascade Township to continue building services was not before. I was directed to seek quotes from ACI, IMS, and a company of my choice. The next day, I met with Cascade Township and they informed me they will no longer provide building inspection services after July 1st, 2018. In fact, they informed me that if we could find them any sooner, they would prefer that as they cited irreconcilable differences with this Lowell City Council on this matter. My discussions with them were concerning as they did not believe they were given a fair opportunity to correct any concerns the City Council had. Since that meeting, I've been in the process of trying to find an interim provider. Uh, was suggested by Cascade Township, I reach out to Professional Code Inspections of Michigan to assist us. PCI provides building inspection services to many cities, villages, and townships in West Michigan are held in very high regard. I reached out to Kirk Sharphorn, Senior President of the Company, last week to discuss if they can assist us on short notice. Uh, Tuesday, Chief Dukel and I met with Mr. Sharphorn, hope I got that correct.
Yes, sir.
Um, to just, to deliberate this for, I was pleased with his firm could assist and very pleased with what they could do to help us. They can provide us with all of the services we receive from Cascade Township, which include building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing inspections. In our initial meeting, we were informed we are somewhat out of PCI's footprint as they hold offices in Jensen, Door, and Hastings. They informed us all, they informed, they informed us all plans will have to come through City Hall. Currently with Cascade Township, everything goes directly to them. However, the building inspector whom would be assigned to us lives in Grant Township. Additionally, one of the other inspectors lives nearby and we can formalize a process through them. Furthermore, PCI cannot provide office hours. The city, the city currently doesn't hold office hours now and city staff doesn't have issue with this. Uh, the fee structure we have in place currently will need to change. It's currently the fees that Cascade sets, um, that we have to accept as part of the agreement. There will be some differences in permit and site plan review fees. My initial review of fees determines some permit fees may be slightly higher, however, review, review fees are somewhat lower. In addition, the city will no longer receive 20% of all fees collected as we did with Cascade Township. PCI will allow for a sliding scale of fees for projects beginning with 10% for projects over 1.5 million dollars in value. That being said, there will be no general fund expenditures through PCI. However, uh, greater administrative tasks by city staff will ensue due to the new arrangement. The city, the city clerk's office will be responsible for all intake procedures and PCI will need to work with them along with our assessors so they receive final permits in a reasonable time so they can assess values properly. This sliding scale I discussed is proposed as fol- as follows. For any project between 1.5 and 2.5 million, 10% will be returned to the city. For any projects over 2.5 million and 3.5 million, 15% would be returned to the city. Any project between 3.5 million and 4.5 million, 20% would be returned to the city. And projects over 4.5 million, um, would be 25% returned to the city. PCI is proposing a one-year agreement. It should be noted that time is of the essence and I'm satisfactory to this since they are helping us out on short notice and it'll also give our top, our staff time to develop our processes we need to improve service to the businesses and the residents. Based on the current situation, I did not see, uh, quotes or proposals from all firms directed because I can't, it cannot be done, in my opinion, properly before July 1st, 2018. I'm making an executive decision to slowly, move slowly, forward slowly with PCI in the proposed manner. I referenced check PCI with the city manager of Hudsonville and the assistant city manager of Granville, both of whom currently use PCI. Both speak highly of PCI and recognize them as a member of their team. Um, I should also, I'm also going to mention that if approved, our clerk's staff will head to the city of Hudsonville to learn their intake processes in the very near future so we can start getting what we need to on our end to be, um, to be, to be able to meet the needs of our, our businesses and the public. I recommend a one-year interim agreement with PCI. I suggest this matter be reviewed at six months and nine months to ensure we are satisfied. If so, I would like to consider a long-term relationship possibly with PCI. If we are not pleased with their service, then we should proceed within our due. Hopefully, this will allow for city administration to focus on greater needs of the city. I recommend that the Lowell City Council enter into an agreement with Professional Code of Inspe- and inspections of Michigan in the manner I discussed. Kirk Sharphorn is here tonight to answer any questions you may have about PCI and their service. And, um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I have a question for you, Mike, just, I know it's came across quickly here, but, um, with the 20% not being returned to the city, but the sliding scale, what does that do to us? How does that net out? Is this big dollars that's going to affect us on the budget?
I don't think it's going to be that great. Might be maybe 10,000, $12,000. I have to, though, I can get an answer for you.
I understand, yes, I can, no?
No. But I can get an answer.
Good evening, Mr. Sharphorn.
Kirk, um, could you tell us what small communities you work with that have older buildings and, and what you've been able to do to help them develop those? I could, I think the most recent, two years ago, I took the city of Alton. They have a huge historic district, their entire downtown area is historic. When I took it over, they had 18 empty storefronts because their past inspection service apparently didn't know how to work with old buildings, didn't know how to make amends. Uh, maybe they never heard of the rehab code or grandfather clauses when they don't change the occupancy and use of the building. We're now down in two years to six storefronts. I wrote letters and got them grants that between all the buildings over a million dollars and those are soon going to take off. But that's going to be a new city soon and we breathe a lot of life into them. I didn't do it all, they got a good city manager. Actually, I went through like four city managers in two years. But they got one now that's good and we're on the right track. So, the tough ones are the historic districts and that's one reason when I was talking with Mr. Burns, it's like, I really don't want to go to all your historic district committees. I have over five dozen communities I work for, that's a lot of night meetings. Um, I don't care to do that every night, every more, uh, anymore. And, um, so what I was proposing is, first of all, if you're stuck on an interim basis without an inspection firm, I would be more than happy to help you until you get one. No strings attached, we'll do a more than excellent job. Long range, you're really going to like us, we like to become part of the community. Not only do we give service to your contractors, um, but we also like to give your residents instructions. It's not just leave a red sticker and violation, this isn't right for a homeowner. You better sit down and explain to them the reason, uh, why, and then what's the best way to correct it. And we do that constantly. Um, so I know service is the best thing I can do for you, um, to work with you, obviously not against you, I don't want to be the outside hired conslinger, I want to be part of your community. I probably sponsor 75 Little Lake teams. I do four different cities fireworks displays. I've become part of the community, so that's what I'm trying to stress with you. I'm not a hired conslinger. Uh, I think we could very well take care of you. What I've seen on your permit fees, your lower end is quite low. And I couldn't give you back 20% of those permits. But looking at some of your projects and your fees, we're, we're very close. I did a comparison of building permits for some of family homes, garages, decks. A lot of them were, were maybe 50, $75 higher. And the house, we were probably a couple hundred dollars higher and that can be a lot for some people. Um, it's just what it is. I hire the best people available. We get all our continued education, all our own insurances, basically, we're responsible for everything, the city's not responsible for any of my people or any of my insurances. So, the way it works good is like a lot of communities like Georgetown Township and Ottawa County, 65,000 people. They do their own zoning, they want to keep control of that, which is great. They get all the paperwork ready, they get the applications, they approve the zoning, they call us up, hey, we've got some packets for you, we come over, pick them up, write all the permits, contact the contractors, collect the checks in the name of the city, and then of course, we return everything to the city and, and they get a monthly report with the ledgers and all the checks to match. So there's a lot of things we can do. And I don't have like other companies, one size fits all, this is what we do, take this contract, take these fees, or it's not going to work. We like to streamline our program to meet your needs. And if we can come to a mutual agreement on how that works, absolutely the best way. So, I'd like to thank you came to the best person the second time. But I also know Cascade is good and a lot of their inspectors are actually friends of mine. So, you got nothing bad to say about them, I just happen to think my company's better. So, um, if you have any questions, I'll try not to be so run on and just answer them direct, but feel free.
How are your employees trained? Like the gentleman from Grattan that will be coming down, does he have all the criterias from mechanical to, to whatever, whatever needs to be done and how is he trained?
He does not. Actually, you're looking at the only person in the state that carries every license there is. So there's no more like me. But he is a building official, building inspector slash plan reviewer. Right now, he sits in Rockford on Wednesdays for office hours limited, he goes to Oakfield Township on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So he's up here three days a week. And I figure if anybody needs a building inspection Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, he just takes Lincoln Lake Road into town and he takes care of them. His kids all went to Lowell. I also have two electric inspectors, one lives in Ada, one lives in Lowell Township, both very familiar. They could handle the electric quite easily. And then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I have a combination plumbing and mechanical inspector that covers Rockford and Oakfield. And he usually doesn't have quite a full day, I think Lowell Township would finish that up very well, so every Tuesday and Thursday, you could count on plumbing and mechanical inspections in Lowell. If you ever get a, an emergency, like an electrical service where someone's going to be without power, we absolutely would do that anytime it's needed. Occasionally, if you had a big job where they had to pour concrete, we could probably even slide in a plumbing and mechanical inspector to keep you guys going. But that's our goal, our goal is to make you look good.
I'm on the historic district board and, uh, you know, that, that's huge. So you were talking about that and if you have meetings in different places, I would believe we probably have some tenants that wouldn't mind coming over to where you are or even I would to get some information to pass back. So, if you could provide that information to us, I think that would be, you know, great communication or, you know, helping us to understand and move forward.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, but the, the meetings I have are like township board meetings or city council meetings, they probably don't want to go there.
Right.
So.
So you don't get smaller groups to where you have other committees talking and brainstorming?
No, we have, uh, I belong to just about every organization in the state for codes and we go to those monthly meetings or semi-annual meetings.
Okay.
But as far as holding workshops for your community residents, no, I do not do that.
Okay.
Actually, I think the way that it works, the historic district calls the shots on what's allowed and things are approved there first and like new windows or doors, at that point, the structural side of it would be approved by the building inspector, but they really don't control too much outward appearance issues, which is what the historic district is concerned with. Yeah, we're not going to do any of that. We're relying on you to tell them what materials they can use and what they can replace and what they can and how, we're just going to make sure that's what they get.
Okay, got you.
I don't know if you already do that or not.
Yeah.
Okay. I tell you, Elegant, um, they're becoming a ghetto, um, not near as nice as this little town. But they kind of loosen some of the rules, they allow like vinyl garbrails now, vinyl siding on houses as long as it's a double floor and it kind of matches, I'm not telling you to do that. But their community is so poor, they didn't have a chance. Uh, these people just couldn't afford to do anything with their homes and they just kept deteriorating. Yeah, fortunately, our historic district is mainly businesses and.
Yes.
We had a former resident leave us 11 million, uh, you can get a 30% grant from the historic district, once you're completed, they reimburse you, so it, it really has been a shot in the arm for Lowell and we're real fortunate that there's a demand for, uh, business locations here and we're, we're really quite healthy. We just look forward, I, I've worked with your company in the past on plumbing and mechanical things and you've got a good group of guys and we're looking forward to having a good partner that will help move us forward and occupy some of our second and third floors and, uh, develop buildings. Thank you for that.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Alright, well, I think we've created enough work for Mike and the rest of his staff. I think he's done a good job with this and I like what PCI has to offer. So with that, I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council enter into an agreement with PCI of Michigan in the manner prescribed.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on that? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent and Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Okay, so this, thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks for doing that first, Mr. Burns.
Item B, employee and retiree healthcare, Michael again.
In April, the city was informed we would be seeing a 7.4% increase in our healthcare premium costs, which brings us over a 10% increase in the past two years. The current plan, a priority HMO, is no longer a sustainable policy for the city to maintain. Because our current plan is a pre-affordable care act policy, I predict the cost will continue to increase astronomically as insurance companies no longer want to provide these policies. As a result, the city was forced to look at other options for healthcare for our employees. And working with our agent Tina Harbin from Hub International, she presented a priority health savings account policy that reduced costs for the city and the employee. The plan proposed is different than the current plan as it is a high deductible plan. Before insurance would kick in, the insured would need to contribute $1,400 if they're single or $2,800 if they're double or family. This means rather than going to the doctor and making a $15 copay, you would pay, you would pay the negotiated full price for priority healthcare and payments for the visit. Once you reach the deductible amount, insurance pays 90% of the costs. Prescription costs may differ until the individual reaches their total out-of-pocket amount of either $3,500 for single or $7,000 for a family. Then insurance funds 100% beyond those amounts. Preventative care, uh, such as your annual checkup, they're funded at 100% regardless of the deductible has been met. Additionally, when you, when you visit the drugstore for a prescription, you will pay the priority health negotiated price rather than the generic preferred band copay amount of $20 or $40. This will continue until you reach your deductible, after which copays will, will vary depending on the circumstances. With the changes to the plan on July 1st, 2018, there would be no payroll deduction for employees who accept the healthcare. However, the employee will be responsible for the deductible, which is for either $1,400 single or $2,800 double or family. The individual premium costs fall under the state of Michigan hard cap amounts, which municipalities are required to follow under Public Act 152. The current plan's individual premium costs do not fall under the hard cap provision. Therefore, the employee is forced to pay the individual premium cost above the prescribed amount. We don't, we don't fall on that, so, for, so, we're not, the premium costs come in lower than what the state designates, so the employee would only have to pay beyond that amount under the, under the state law, we don't meet that. So, by converting to the HSA plan, the annual premium cost to the city will be $204,131.16, which will be paid entirely by the city. If the city stayed in the priority health HMO, the total annual premium cost would be $247,339.92, with the city contributing $213,271.75 for the premium. Under the hard cap provisions required by the state of Michigan under Public Act 152, the employees will be responsible for $34,068.78. That's total, that's not individual employee. This does include, this doesn't include the additional $2,000 single or $4,000 double or family the employee would pay in deductibles before the insurance is activated. This change in policy alleviates a past concern. Recently, it was brought to my attention that the retiree has a better healthcare arrangement than the working employee. Under the current policy, the retiree who meets the merest definition of retirement receives five years of insurance until age 65. The city pays in full the amount of the premium for the retiree and the, and the retiree funds the deductible and the taxes, which is approximately $300 a year. Under the new plan, the coverage and deductible for the employee and retiree are identical. The only difference is the responsible, the retiree is responsible for paying the taxes as reported by law. I gave you a copy of the policy comparisons, um, the annual costs that they gave were not correct because we had some changes in people who were taking the policy since, since that came out. But healthcare is something the city needs to monitor on an annual basis and we have to make changes based on cost assessment. Healthcare will continue to increase, but ensuring we have, we are reducing costs where we can and ensure employees have adequate care is essential. I believe the proposed plan meets this concern. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council allow the, allow the city to enroll in a priority health HSA 1400 account beginning on July 1st, uh, 2018 in the manner I mentioned. Uh, should be mentioned that I have reached out to both unions on this and, um, they are, they are on board with this.
We've talked about this for a long time, I think a lot of places are going, the HSA is cheaper for the employee and it sounds like it'll save us almost $10,000.
How did the non-union staff feel about it, Mike?
I have not gotten any complaints about it. Obviously, there's a little, there's a lot of different, obviously, parameters regarding bargaining and all that, but, um, no, I, I have not had any, I have not had any complaints about, um, switching, which, I mean, there's a couple of, I mean, everyone has different scenarios with their healthcare, but one of the advantages I, that I, that I, that I see with HSA is, and I, I've had experience with this, is, is consumer-driven, so it's more, I'm managing my own healthcare and I'm managing my costs. And, um, I think, I think that is, you know, something we need to think about as we move forward, is that we're playing more of a role in our healthcare to contain our costs. And, um, that's what I like about these plans.
On the one note here, it says no payroll deduction for employees will be accepted in the healthcare, but there's a $1,400 or $2,800 act to pay. Would you do weekly deductions on their payroll to cover that, are they going to come up with?
No, what we're going to, what we're going to do for the employees, we're going to set up a HSA account for them so they can, they can do payroll deduction if they so choose. Yes, no, we're not, we're not making any, any, any contribution to the deduction, we're just going to handle the premium. And that was kind of the trade-off, because I looked at this a couple of different ways and a couple of the other ways required us actually to opt out of PA 152 to do. And when you really looked at what we were, what we were, what the savings difference was, it was minimal and I would probably recommend not opting out of PA 152 after looking at this further, so.
So by the end of the year, they have to have contributed $1,400 into their HSA account?
Well, not.
$2,800 into?
No. No, 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 not necessarily.
They have to spend before.
Or insurance kicks in.
Before insurance kicks in.
You know, some people, every person's different, you might have a family that they have a certain, they have a certain issue where they can go through their, they can go through their deductible on the first month. You have some other people who, they may just go to the doctor once a year for their healthcare and never have to pay anything for their, I mean, have to pay anything for their, for their deductible because they never had to do anything for insurance, I mean, so everyone's different, that's kind of one of the, but one of the nice things with priority health, what they do is they allow, um, they'll allow the employee, go to their website and say, for example, if you needed to have a blood test. They'll find you 10 different blood test providers in the area and you can shop at best on price. So, the place you normally go is $35 and you can get it for $7, well, it's your money, so go to this place, they charge you $7. So, that's one of the nice things about what, what priority healthcare does and, um, I would, I would, I would recommend this policy.
Is there a rollover if you contribute?
Yes.
And you don't use it, so you're in good health?
Correct.
And you can use it too for your Meyer pharmacy?
Correct.
Dayquil, all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
I know ours you can use it for your dental, eye doctor, whatever else.
Right, we also use priority health and we're looking at, it's a no-brainer to do this. The tough part is, like, we have an employee that has expensive, uh, prescription costs every month and he's paying a $20 copay. Well, with this, he's going to be paying $1,500 right up front every month until he hits his deductible.
Right.
For healthy people, it's great, it creates a savings account and their money way ahead. And as you said, Mike, if, if, everybody manages it themselves and they're more careful on how they spend those dollars, so.
Right, and one of the, because, not getting into specifics, some of those issues exist here as well. And, um, we are working with Hub to work directly with those people, so there's different types of, especially with prescriptions, there's different types of options for them. Maybe what it is, is okay, um, rather than getting that $1,500 upfront, it's spread out, you know, there's payment plans that they can, they can address through their HSA or things of that nature. So Hub's aware of that, they're, you're going to be working with our employees who are in those scenarios to the best of their ability.
And it may be different because it's a municipality, but in our program, we're a smaller group than the city, we can have two plans, we can offer the HSA and the existing plan that we have, I don't think that's an option.
We looked at a couple of different things, um, we actually looked at, um, we let, we let the, um, we let the IVW, um, they actually shopped for a policy, um, to see if they could get better savings and, you know, maybe, you know, an improved plan. And one of the issues we have here, because now with the, with the Affordable Care Act, we're now member-rated, so a number of different factors, every, every person, based on their age, health issues, things of that nature, they, they set a rate for every individual employee. And what we've kind of, the situation we kind of have here is, we actually shopped, Light Power made a switch to, to go, um, to allow their, uh, their lineman to opt out. They were able to do that because they were able to get a lot more cost-effective policy for those, for those members in that union through their national program. However, one of the things that we have here is, um, our member ratings is a little higher because we have, we have an older workforce than Light Power does, so that plays a role. So we looked at that, one of the things I wanted to make sure we had was, what I didn't want is, I didn't want the city to be managing multiple policies. From my experience, that's, that's administrative headache, um, since we administer it, but we looked at, I mean, we looked at a number of different options, better effect, the policy that Light Power went to for their other employees, we looked at that, that was actually more costly for us than, than what we had. So we've looked at, we've looked at this every, you know, every possible way. We wanted, we wanted to make sure we could stay in priority health because really they're, it's, I mean, either they're a blue cross and blue cross tends to be higher, but priority health is, is pretty much highly regarded throughout West Michigan and they're all over West Michigan and, and I wanted to make sure that we, like I said, we had a policy that was obviously cost-effective, but something that our employees could, could, you know, could utilize to their, to their advantage.
Did you have to deal with anything special with any, do we have any employees over 65? I know at my work, because I'm 65, I might have had a totally different type plan, Mike.
We have that issue, yes, here.
Well, they'll do a lot of shopping on for you too, though, priority health.
Yeah, exactly.
If you call them and say, hey, this is $1,500 bucks a month, there's no way it's feasible, they'll.
They'll work with you.
They'll work with you.
They, they told us that from, from the beginning.
This is a no-brainer to me.
Yep, definitely.
Alright, with that, I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council allow the city to enroll in priority health, uh, beginning of July 1st, 2018 in the manner prescribed.
I'll support.
Any other discussion or questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedle?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Alright, item C is Protech membership, Michael?
Yes. Uh, attached is a letter from Protech, the Michigan Coalition of Protect Public Red Andways. Protech has been our organization for 22 years. Their purpose is to take the lead, coordinate actions to protect local government interests and to inform municipal officials of significant developments in the area of public roadway management. In the past, they've been actively involved in issues regarding the placement of cable boxes and other utility objects in the roadway. They have also been involved in protecting tech channels, entities associated with them, and this group is currently involved in the fight regarding the small cell DAS legislation that I mentioned previously. that I mentioned previously. Cost of membership to the city of Lowell is four hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. I did give you some information, I believe there's about seventy-five to eighty cities, villages, and townships statewide that are a member of this, and I know the Grand Valley Metro Council has been, in my meetings with Grand Valley Metro Council, they have been mentioning Pro-Tech more and more, especially with the matters of the DAS, small cell technologies. So, I'm recommending that the city join Pro-Tech.
And it's a relatively small number, four hundred seventy-two dollars for public's knowledge.
Hey Perry, does, oh, Light and Power belong to this as well or no?
I don't know.
Where's Steve when you need him? Oh, it makes sense.
Yeah, I think especially with the small cell DAS stuff that's coming in as fast as it is, if you're on your own with that, you're in a lot of trouble.
With that, I'll recommend that the Lowell City Council approve the city's membership of Pro-Tech for a cost of four hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
All right, last one, item D, MML Legal Defense Fund for the Escanaba Big Box Store Battle.
As you're aware, the city of Escanaba has been involved in the fight to preserve and correct assessment of large box stores. Several big box stores have been involved in challenging assessments based on closed stores and/or deed restrictions on the closed properties, thereby lowering the value of that property and then claiming that value of those stores be used as comparable to set the value for new property stores. This isn't a proper way to set values for new properties, and it has been artificially reduced the property taxes for the vibrant big box stores. Unfortunately, the Michigan Tax Tribunal has upheld their claims. Recently, the city of Escanaba has won a significant victory in the Michigan Supreme Court in the litigation of Menard Incorporated versus city of Escanaba. The case has been reminded back to the Michigan Tax Tribunal for a determination of actual value. During the appeal to the Michigan Supreme Court, the city of Lowell have joined about thirty-four other municipalities in an amicus brief on behalf of ourselves and the various municipalities supporting the city of Escanaba. The city of Escanaba now needs additional help in the Michigan Tax Tribunal case. There was an attached letter from the Michigan Municipal League on this, but to kind of just kind of explain it, the city of Escanaba, the legal bills to fight it now is about a hundred ninety thousand dollars for the city of Escanaba. Dickinson County, that the county they're in, I believe it's Dickinson County, is contributing about forty thousand dollars, but they've been reaching out to all of the municipalities statewide to contribute again, because one of the issues they're having is, especially with these larger corporations, they have the resources and revenue to keep fighting on this issue, and the city, this will affect every community in the state of Michigan. I'd like the city council to consider assistance for this case. The decision of this case would likely have an impact on our assessments, and we should assist in the defense. I would like the city council to consider making a contribution to the Michigan Municipal League Legal Defense Fund and designate it for the MML LDF fund. Now, if you recall, we did this about a year and a half ago with the amicus brief. Initially, there were so many communities that jumped on, and I believe initially, we believed it was about a seven hundred and fifty dollar contribution, but with the, all of the different communities that chipped in at the time, our cost was reduced to about, I want to say, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I know communities across the state are given different amounts. I've heard as high as, I've heard five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars. I wouldn't go any higher than a thousand dollars. You might even want to just consider five hundred. Just something, I think even just giving something just as kind of a token to show that we're united and we're, all the cities of Michigan are impacted by this, and in my opinion, it's more of a, while it would help them, it's more of a fight for municipalities in the state of Michigan to fight this issue, because this has been a big issue statewide, actually throughout the Midwest, actually, and it's drastically, it's drastically negatively affecting communities throughout the state because of these rulings.
I will say that when we were in Red Haven a few weeks ago, that was a topic of conversation with Municipal League, because they presented me with this letter and the offer, and you're doing a myriad of different things. You're presenting a united front with other communities, a ton of other communities in the area. You're also kind of sending a message that says, hey, we're on board here, so don't come here and try that. And as, you know, retail's dying, Amazon's taking over, AC malls empty across the country, big stores across the country, eventually, it'll affect almost everybody. I didn't hear one leader, one lead reference, anything that said, you know, we're not going to help them, they're on their own. I'd like to see us put five hundred dollars out to them for their legal defense fund and, you know, show that we're all kind of united in this.
You want a motion on it, Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to hold on it.
All right, I'll make a motion that we contribute five hundred dollars to the Escanaba Legal Defense Fund designated MML LDF.
I'll support.
Any other discussion on it? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers is absent, Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
All right, clears out new business, let's go to Boarding Commission reports, Mr. Canfield.
Uh, nothing yet.
Mr. Phillips.
I don't have any bigger report.
Mr. Salzweil.
Do you report?
Marty's gone. I have nothing, I have fire authority on the eleventh, and DDA, we move to the twenty-eighth, correct, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. And Vision, and we don't know about you, thirteenth?
No, Vision for the month of June and July will meet, will be here on...
You're right. All right, Mr. Brunson makes it your turn, City Manager, report.
Couple things to report. If anyone's seen the sign on Hudson Street, we are going to begin construction on June eleventh. We have gotten information on our phasing, weather permitting, the south end of Hudson, between Maine and Grand River, will begin on the eleventh of June and through the twelfth of June. At that time, that will be closed, traffic will be diverted to Jackson, back to Maine. There will be a temporary four-way stop at Jackson and Maine, and we anticipate two days for that phase of the project. Once that's complete, county will go north of Maine and finish to the north city limits. Traffic will be open during that phase, and I'm sure that it'll be a relief for people who have to drive that road every day, and I'm pleased that that'll be completed very soon. North Broadway, we should receive, hopefully, we should receive updated information tomorrow, but they do anticipate putting the top code on North Broadway end of this week, and that's all I have to report.
Okay. We have still no implications for any of the open board positions, so there's nothing new for appointments. Council comments? Mr. Canfield?
Nothing.
Mr. Phillips?
I'd like to thank Michael for that walkability study with Dan, truly amazing. I believe you'll never look at the city the same once you did that. This guy was incredible. He had a tape measure in his best time and he just saw things that we didn't see, and he's really good at what he does, so thank you for providing that for us. I think it's going to be efficient and effective for us down the road, and I enjoyed that, and I hope everybody has a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Salzweil.
I'm good.
Good. I'll say that Greg and Jim and Marty and I walked in the Memorial Day Parade with Mike on Sunday, and it was cool and refreshing to be outside. We had a nice little ceremony down in the cemetery. I'll say concerts start over here Thursday the fourteenth, and that's all I'll say. Now, we'll look for a motion to move to a closed session and discuss the upcoming labor negotiations.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session at seven forty.
I'll support.
Sue?
Councilmember Canfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers is absent.
Okay.